What's up guys? Today, we are doing a full analysis of the Ice Lord 13 session. There were a ton of clips that I couldn't put in the sampler. I'm gonna talk a little bit about what the Ice Lord Sampler series is. And then, I'm gonna go through an analysis of all the clips. I have some falls in here, I have some wins, and there's a lot of stuff to learn. I don't often go through my full analysis with you guys, so I'm really excited to go through this with you. And she really wanted to be involved, so she is here as well. So, the Ice Lord Sampler series was something that I started a while ago. And this is number 13. The first one was a really important sampler to me, that kinda helped define what I wanted my tricking style to be, trying to be a lot cleaner, trying to be a lot more refined with my technique, and trying to have a big diverse move set. Where are you going? Then, after that, I kinda wanted to do a way to track my progress with samplers. And I think the best way for me to do that personally was to make all of the Ice Lord samplers from then on after, one session. That kinda gave me a good constraint to kinda work off of, and not get too kinda bogged down with holding clips in. For the sampler making process for a lot of trickers, it ends up being a really long time, because we wanna get those good clips. But, I really wanna track my progress and help make content for you guys. So that's why the Ice Lord Sampler sessions aren't like a compilation of a bunch of different clips throughout like a year. It's just one hype session where I just go off. But that's kinda the impetus and the idea behind the Ice Lord samplers. So let's get into the analysis of this amazing session. I had a great time, but I definitely didn't land everything I wanted to land. There were a few things I just did not get. Meow. So, all of these clips are in chronological order. What you see in the beginning of this session was essentially my warm-up, and what you see at the end of this session was essentially my cooldown. When it comes to the Ice Lord sessions, I just kinda go off, so to speak. I don't have a super slow warm-up. I kinda throw a few basic tricks, and then I'm just like, I just kinda go at it. And that's kinda the idea that I do with every single one of these. So, let's see. I start off with a cheat nine hook Sailor Moon twist. That's like a super bread and butter combo for me. I like doing cheat nine hook Sailor Moon twist. And it's kind of a good combo for me to feel how my body is feeling for that session. Now, let's see this again, but in slow motion. I definitely, when it came to the cheat nine, could've done that way better. My takeoff position was right there, so I was facing my target. That's what I want, every single time. And I spin, I a little bit under-rotated the cheat nine, and my extension was not what I wanted it to be. But that's how you can tell this is kinda like a warm-up trick. Oh yo, welcome to the tricking nation, my friend. That clip is Neil just getting bopped! Just getting bopped! As well as Adam getting bopped. Many people got bopped that night. But yeah, I think that cheat nine could've been a little bit better. I like this hook kick, but you see that? That thing that I got going on like right there? That's what we call boot foot. When it looks like your foot should be in a boot. And I don't like that. So I definitely wanna point my toes on that. I point out my toes like right after that, but I wanna rise my foot up with pointed toes. I don't wanna throw a boot and then point as I kick. That's just a me thing. The Sailor Moon twist felt really good. I got a good hand plant there. That left leg that I have bent up right now should be extended. That was, that would give me more power in the future. And I don't know what the hell my left arm is doing there. It's like shooting up in the sky. Good twist, fully rotated, I feel comfortable with that. I wish I could've landed a little bit more higher up, so that way I could've comboed out of it easier. But I'm working right now on how to combo out of my Sailor Moon twist way more effectively. And I think that's gonna get a lot better in the future. Here we do a 540 rap nine coin drop, 1990 to a master scoot to a double cork to Iron Man. This was kinda my way of thinking, am I strong this session, or am I weak this session? Ah, not to sound like too crazy, but if I did not, this combo is like, not a easy combo for me, but it's not particularly difficult either. So if I cannot land this combo, it's kinda showing me that I shouldn't go super, super hard this session. But this combo went really, really well. I really liked my 540, good extension. I think my foot dipped way too low on the rap. You can see I almost touched the ground here. And I don't like that. I don't like that at all. But, I was able to lift myself up, finish the rap nine, go right into the coin drop and into the 1990. Recently, my 1990s have been like either 360 degrees, or like maybe 540. I haven't really gotten the double 1-2 1990 that I've been looking for. That's like my dream. But I think I will certainly get it as I progress this skill. Master scoot, double cork to Iron Man is just such a bread and butter finisher for me. It's one of those things that I feel comfortable doing on the grass, I feel comfortable doing it on the concrete if I got some shoes on. Like, it's something that I feel good doing, cuz I've done it so many times, that if I can't do it, it definitely shows me that I need to chill that session. I really liked this clip, and it shows that like, I was ready. Next, we have all the backside 12s. Oh, so backside 12 is a trick that I personally cannot stand! I don't like it! But I think it's really important for me to have a wide range of skills. The reason I don't like backside 12 is once you get to a certain level of vert kick, it looks like you're just spinning in the air and then throwing out a leg. And I don't like that. I don't like that aesthetically. So for me, it's really important to have the kick look like it could kick somebody, and have good form, and look like a martial artist as I perform my kick skills. And it's hard to look like a martial artist when you're doing a double, which is essentially what a backside 12 is. But I felt good about it. I definitely smashed this backside 12. Bah! I think my kick could've come out a little bit cleaner, for sure. I definitely, one thing I hate is when people do backside 12 and things, and then they step their feet to neutral instead of starting from a backside. I'm very glad that I started from a true backside. I'm definitely leaning too much. You see my body's starting to turn a little bit? I wanna keep it as vertical as I can for this. I was able to land still, but you can even tell that in my landing position, I am leaning a little bit to the side, so I'm definitely gonna fall. But I was able to kinda follow through with the kick, and then drop that leg on the ground to stabilize myself. Oh, that did not feel good on my body though, and I'm definitely feeling it today. But backside 12 is not a comfortable skill for me. It's not a skill I like. So the fact that I'm able to kinda throw it out these days is really good. That feels really good for me. And then, after that, it's so funny. I thought that backside 12 felt really good, but I wanted to land it cleaner. So I kept trying to do a better clip of the backside 12, and I kept failing. Which is so funny, this just kinda happens sometimes at the session. You'll boom, nail a skill the first time you do it, and then every other time you do it, it just gets worse and worse and worse. And that was kinda the case with my backside 12 that day. Oh, that one was a good like, straight face to the ground, straight classic. Let's see that again. Again, I started in a complete backside, but you can tell right here, I'm leaning way too much. This is my issue when it comes to backside 12 and a lot of vert kicks. I have a tendency to lean when I shouldn't. The first backside 12 you saw, I stayed up nice and straight. This one, I leaned way too much, and because of that, I'm falling. That said, I recognized that I was gonna fall, and I'm doing a good ukeumi. I'm gonna really absorb with that arm as I go down with the leg as well. But man, I ate the floor there, there's no denying it. And here we go! This one, I cheated a little bit. You can see my legs are going more towards neutral, my form is starting to get worse. I didn't lean at all that time, and you need a little bit of lean. So this time, I fell again, but I under-rotated it. Classic, classic. Yeah, backside 12 is a hard skill for me to do, but I'm definitely progressing with it. And I'm progressing with all vert kicks. I just need to get out of that habit of leaning too much. And it's getting there. Double full hyper hook touchdown rise cork shuriken cutter. This is another one of those kinda like bread and butter ones for me. If I can do a double full hyper hook, I can combo out of it relatively easily. That said, with this one in particular, I felt a little bit of a lack of control. You can see in this clip, or in this frame right here, my chest is dipping down way too much. I need to keep my chest proper, so I can continue the momentum. But thankfully, I was able to muscle through this touchdown rise. You can see I had a full like stop in that momentum. That leg should not hit the ground, but like skate over the ground, so that way I can keep that momentum going to run right into that touchdown rise. The touchdown rise looked good, but I have had this issue with my touchdown rise, and I correct it more on the later clips, where I get too high on my arm, and I should go a little bit lower and roll a little bit more in my touchdown rise instead of jumping into it. But I was able to do a solid shuriken cutter. That was not my best shuriken cutter though. For sure. Touchdown rise is a good setup for me, but it's not like my favorite or my best setup. Yeah, I should've extended that leg and swung a little bit more, gained a little bit more height before I started going right into the variation, which was definitely an issue here. That said, you can still see a shuriken. I should get my legs spread a little bit more to make the variation clearer. But I was able to open up for a nice solid hook kick. And I was able to absorb and not stick the landing, but absorb the landing. Which that felt good. And here, we get into a little bit of struggle bus. With me, when it comes to dub dub, I have this issue with commitment. I will do a big double full and I'll set for it, but then I won't rip it. I won't complete the full swing and let my chest go through the full motion. I'll either get my eyes locked forward, or I'll look back way too fast. And in the first few, you can see I'm just lacking that commitment. I'm just lacking that final push. Cuz it's a good cartwheel, very solid double full. The eagle looks great, I just need to pick up my chest and continue the swing? I just hesitated. And in that hesitation, I lost it. And that loss is tragic. So that one, I was not able to do it, not able to complete the swing. And I had that same issue on the next one as well. Good eagle, good form, just gotta pick that chest up? Nope, nothing. Oh! Like, this frustrates me more than falling most of the time, because I know I could've gone for this skill, I just didn't due to some sort of like mental hesitation or gap. Maybe the wind wasn't right, maybe the sun hit me in the eye weird. But regardless, I should've done that cuz that looked good in the footage. Ah! That said, I think right after that, I start committing. And I did a, yup, this is a full ukeumi dub dub. You can see, I know I'm gonna fall before I even like really swing into the second dub. And right here, I'm like fully extended, I got that arm out. I'm about to roll out of this thing, cuz I know I'm about to eat it. And eating it is never fun. It's never fun to eat it. But that said, if you need to get over the fear barrier, and you feel comfortable falling, sometimes just yeeting it, for lack of a better term, does work. And it's something that kinda helped me get through the mental barrier of the double full swing double cork during this session. I will say though, that little neck crick I did, that rocked my body. That rocked my body. Would you ever try shuriken? So I thought I would never do shuriken, like a few months ago. But recently, I've been getting relatively comfortable with shuriken cutter turbo, which is where you do the shuriken cutter and you land on both legs, which is the direct prerequisite before shuriken. So I think if I drill my shuriken kick a little bit more and get super comfortable with it, I'd feel comfortable doing shuriken. But I just need to work up the progression a little bit more. That said, shuriken cutters have been feeling really, really good. I just have never done shuriken cutter hyper, which is a super important thing to do before shuriken. So, we'll see. I'm like working up to it. I'm working up to it. But on this dub dub, I finally committed. Though, I committed when I shouldn't have. This is a super funny clip, because my foot hits the ground right there. Oh! And if you're swinging, if you're a tricker and you've done swing skills, you know that once your foot hits the ground, you lose so much power, you've lost almost all of it. So I was like deathly terrified after my foot tapped the ground. But I was like, no, no, no. No, no, no. I'm committing. I'm doing this dub dub. I said in my head that I wanted to do a dub dub today, so I'm gonna do a dub dub. So I, yeah, I ripped the power. I just yeeted it. I ripped it like a Beyblade, like a big fart. Oh my god, ye, ye! And you can tell this double cork is so flat. This is such a flat double cork. You want way more inversion when you do a double cork. But somehow, I then pull my legs beneath me. My hands like get like inches above the ground. And I like recovery aerial out, and then I pop off. Cuz you gotta pop off. When you do something like that, you gotta pop off. Now, it's so funny. Just like the backside 12, I tried to get another dub dub, cuz I felt greedy. But I could not get it again. I could not get it again. I tried one more attempt, and it was like, it didn't feel right. So I was just like, no. No more dub dub, chilling, moving on. To the pain, to the triples, asa! So when it came to triple cork this session, I've been drilling in secret my touchdown rise. I've been drilling touchdown rise triple cork in secret for a little while now, trying to kinda like really hone that setup to use it as my new triple cork setup instead of master scoot, so master scoot can stay like my variation baby. Now, my touchdown rise felt good here, but the first few, I put way too much power into. Now, it's so funny. That first one, the first double cork I did to kinda feel it out, was one of the best ones I've done in a long time. And honestly, I think if I would've just held this, I could've gotten the triple cork. Cuz I get a nice complete full swing. I could've swung a little bit more, I'm sorry, I lied. If I would've swung my leg a little bit further, I would've had a nice complete swing. But from there, I wrap in nicely. Ah, but I open up at the hyper. Let's watch this again in slow motion, just so I can show you guys what I mean. I have this issue when I do triple quirks, where I will open up at the hyper position instead of at the complete it. So a good solid touchdown rise, I'm swinging up, got a good like twisting start position. From here, I just gotta hold tight and hold! But, I don't do that. Instead, I hold for a little bit, but right here, my legs bend in, and my body starts to look not towards my twisting direction, but towards the ground to spot my landing. And this is not what you wanna do if you wanna complete the triple. This is the spotting and the opening up position that I should do if I'm doing like a double cork hyper hook, or a double cork hyper, a double cork mega. Not, or I'm sorry, a double cork semi. Not at all a triple cork. That's why I under-rotated this one by just a little bit. I could've gotten all the way around though, but it just a little bit under-rotated. This showed me though, right there, that I could triple cork, and I should triple cork during this session. But unfortunately, it did not work out that way. It just did not work out that way. So that one, I opened up early because I got scared. Touchdown rise is a good setup for me, but often I feel myself lost. I feel that my spotting on master scoot is so refined at this point. I know exactly where I am, but that's not the case with touchdown rise. And these three clips you just saw, were of me getting lost in the sauce. For me, losing my spotting and losing kinda where I am in space, and then opening up. Cuz when you lose where you are, you need to open up, or you need to not go for the skill. Getting lost and then still going for it is one of the most dangerous things you can do in tricking. So if you truly like feel yourself getting lost in a skill, you gotta open up, you gotta drop, you gotta stop what you're doing and just let your body roll. Ah! I should've committed to these though. I 100% should have committed. There we go. Now we get to one where I committed more, but I still opened up at the hyper. But I did a good touchdown rise, solid swing. That one, this one, I rode the swing up just enough. Getting the right ride in the swing to pick your body up is so crucial. And that's what I've been really missing with my touchdown rise. I undershoot my touchdown rise to kinda give myself more of an uninverted cork. At least this is what I was doing before. And that's not good. I wanna set back a little bit more to really get the inversion, to get the flip I need to do the triple. And that's really good in this clip. But again, right here, I'm opening up and spotting the ground at the hyper instead of just wrapping in and trying to complete the twist. I'm trying to like fight that impulse though. You can see, as I land, I'm still trying to look to the left. I'm still trying to pull my arms to the left. I'm trying to triple cork as hard as I can, but it's just not getting there. But I'm still doing that last little bit of rotation just to keep training for it, so that way in the future, I feel more comfortable doing it. Again, getting lost, I don't like that. But this will come with time. The more I drill my touchdown rise for triple cork, the more I will have an idea of where exactly my body is in space as I perform the skill, which is super crucial, super hard. Let me see, big touchdown rise again? Now you see, that time is a great example of me not committing to the twist, but still setting for something. I'm in the air, I got all this energy, I gotta go somewhere. So instead, I do like this super lazy, super opened up hyper cork. Cuz I have way too much power for this touchdown rise to just like step over. I'm committed at this point. Once you put this much power into a skill, you're committed. You're riding the ride. So, I had to go and just do a cork hyper. But you can tell the whole time, I'm like opening up my body, I'm like moving my legs in weird ways, to just try and control this crazy amount of energy that I've put into this skill that I can't use properly, cuz I didn't commit. Ah! But I lived, and that's the most important thing. Most important thing is not getting injured. Oh, here. Then, I switched pace and tried to go for a master scoot, which felt good. This one had a lot of good rotation. This might've been my closest like triple cork to landing triple cork? But it wasn't the inversion that I like. Like, here's the thing, my master scoot is good, but my master scoot lacks a lot of flip. That's why I would do that palm kick into it when I was first doing my triple cork. Actually, no, I really like this inversion, I lied. This is really solid so far. Again, right here, you see my legs opening up, and like kinda my knees coming in? That is the kinda hyper training that I've done to my body. And I don't mean hyper training, I mean training to land in hyper, that I've like conditioned so deep into my head, that it's hard for me not to do it. And it's like, that's one of the reasons I've also been drilling triple full, and you'll see more of those in a little bit. Ah, so close with that triple cork. Frustrating! But we'll get there, we'll get there. That one, I committed more, but I just lacked the power. And now, after doing all that power training, I need to cool down a little bit and do something that I know I'm going to land. So this is like a basics combo that I just decided to string together. It is 540, or no, I'm sorry, this is a different combo than I thought it was. This is the jackknife butt sweep. I call this little transition right there a butt sweep. To a DMV hook. That's what I learned that skill as, DC Maryland Virginia hook. I don't know. Terminology gets weird. And then I do a master scoot into boom, a thick crowd awakener. I really like this combo, and I've done this combo before. It's very much a bread and butter combo for me. After I fail so much on a skill, like when I fall on triple cork over and over and over again, I gotta get my mental right. I gotta get my mentality straight. And sometimes doing a combo that is a little bit more basic, a little bit more bread and butter for me, kinda gets me there, so that way I can progress to more heavier skills. But this was a clean jackknife. I really like it the way that hook kick came out. I do think I had a little bit too much head whip. I don't like that much head whip. I really like how this crowd awakener came out. I had a very big body shape coming into the air, and that is exactly what I want. Boom, and then slapping down. That felt good. And again, I wanted to do another combo. This one is a little bit more diverse if I remember right. This one was the phalon, this was the phalon combo. So, this was not what I wanted to do at all. I can't remember what exactly the combo I had in my head was, but it all got screwy. So after I did that like phalon and did the cheat gainer, I was like, I don't know where the hell I am. I don't know what I'm doing, so I gotta do something. So I decided to do a rise circle. So I just did a bunch of rises, and I'm like, alright, I'm here now. And then I did a coin drop into a shuriken cutter. That's very much like, for me, if you see me do a coin drop master scoot into a cork variation, that's kind of a recovery. At least from that rise circle, doing a coin drop from a rise circle is often my way of kinda like catching my breath before moving on to a secondary combo of the first combo. With a combo like this, there's like a few different sections to it. Oh, we gotta go further back. The first section is the five, or the phalon step gainer. Where I'm like boom, 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 boom. Then from here, I kinda catch my breath a little bit as I go into the rise circle, which is like the second part of the combo. And then I take a breather when I do that coin drop to do a third part of the combo, which is just kinda like the finisher, which is that shuriken cutter. When it comes to like writing a combo, I will get very intricate with it, and like kinda go deep on like where I want the combo to go, how I want it to be presented. Oh, the struggle, the struggle. So, this is a combo that I wanted to do, and I've been kinda like visualizing in my head for a few days now. It is aerial, and then you do a skip step to a B twist or an A twist. I've heard this called boneless cork. That's why I first tried to learn it as, but it doesn't look like a boneless cork when I do it. And then I'm trying to swing out of it as a setup, which is not something that I've done too often. But today specifically, I wanted to do a box cutter. So you'll see me kinda warm up for the skill, kinda commit more and more. That one, I got a hook kick, that was more of a moon kick. And then this one, I think I fell? No, that was another one where I'm not committing. I think I got a little bit too close to the camera. Oh, this was the one where I committed to doing the skill, doing the box cutter, but then I'm like, where am I? What's happening? Oh, I gotta get out of the way, this is so difficult. And then like from here, when I'm in this position, I just like steel walk out. Classic, classic, I'm a professional. But after that, I landed really well, and I was really happy with how I landed this. This is something that I wanna do more often as like a way to start combos. I wanna combo out of this box cutter in the future. But I just kinda wanted to get the idea. So I really like the good pointed toes, the cleanliness in the aerial. And then you see that like skip step, where one leg replaces the other? And then I go into what I think is more like a, uh, I think cork, but it looks more like an A twist. And it steps more like an A twist. But from here, I try and hit an eagle. This eagle, my chest needs to be way more up. In a lot of these clips of the kinda vanish B twist, vanish aerial, boneless cork, whatever the hell you wanna call this thing, I am definitely under-flipping when I land in the eagle. And I wanna have a lot more flip when going into this eagle, so that way I can swing into the box cutter. But that is just not how it went down. Unfortunate. Unfortunate. Oh, I'm sorry, that was the good clip. The one before was another fail. Ah! I fall a lot. Alright, where are we going from here? I totally don't remember. Holy hell, I almost died. What just happened? So I think I was going for a double full hyper hook, or a triple full, or some high-level skill, but again, I bailed completely. I was so scared. Cuz this cartwheel looks really good. Everything looks great up until this point. And then what? I'm like, ah, where am I? Where is the floor? So I just explode my body up. Thankfully, I was able to get to my feet, but that was scary. Oh, and even I'm walking away like, what? That was scary. Alright, so next I do double full hyper, oh, I remember. Now I remember. So I was going for double full hyper double B twist. And double full hyper double B twist is something I've done like, I think four or five times in the past? I've done it a few times in the past. But it is not something that's like Four or five times in the past. I've done it a few times in the past, but it is not something that's like super consistent for me. Just like with the double full double cork, I struggle with the commitment. And this is me going for a double full butterfly set and then I totally bail. I totally bail and flail my body to cancel my twist. And somehow again, I make it to my feet and I'm not dead. Nah, even I thought, oh, that was a knee slapper. Good old knee slapper. No, I very much thought I was going to die. So when I made it to my feet, I was like, I'm alive. I'm alive. Then we get more of a commitment. I kind of went into it. I committed to it, but I didn't put enough power into it. Often when I finally get the mental barrier to get over that and just finally commit to it, I might not put the power. I might be thinking so much mentally that I'm not putting enough muscularly. Hydration. You gotta cut the hand off if you put it down. That is just tradition around these parts. But here I think I do it. Good double full hyper. I definitely got a good set. The first one I did, I didn't get a good set and I didn't get as much height as I wanted. But that one I was able to really commit to it and pull through. Very nice. Double full. I definitely opened up. This came out more like a hyper hook than a hyper and I'm okay with that, but. No, it definitely looks like a hyper hook. In the future, I want to exaggerate that hook. I guess at this point, if I'm going this much like a hyper hook, I might as well just commit to the hyper hook. And do a cleaner hook kick and then the double B twist, which I think I'll do in the future. And this one felt so strong. I might want to combo out of it next time. And I landed full straight up and down. I could have gotten a little bit more height and a little bit more set, but you know, we're living. Rosby, what's up? Yo, yo, oh Lucky, what is up? How's everybody doing today? I was hype after I landed that though. It is rare for me to do two dub dubs in one session. So when I did this, I, I kind of popped off a little bit. I was very excited. And it's like, it felt good. I wanted to do it, but I wasn't sure if I was eventually going to finally land it. So when I did, I was like, yes. Very happy boy. Oh, and then I did a line of gainer switches. I wanted to end this in a double cork, but my gainer switches felt like garbage. Sometimes a skill that is pretty lock and key for me will just feel randomly like garbo. And that was the case with my gainer switch. I don't know what it was, but after like the first two gainer switches, I was like, oh, this sucks. This doesn't feel good. I think I wasn't keeping my chest up and I was leaning back too early. Like you can see even in this freeze frame. Yeah, I'm definitely leaning back my chest. Yeah, I should keep my chest more forward and more hollowed out as I land the gainer switch. But for some reason, gainer switch in my head just was not clicking and I don't know why. But you know, sometimes that's just how it be. That's how it be. I don't expect to land or to have everything be super, super good. Every time I trick, I expect it to be okay and pray that it kind of works. That's my hope. That's my hope. Oh Lucky, you tried scoot cork on at a trampoline park. Oh yes, and you almost landed it, but you opened too early. Yeah, you'll see me opening up early so much. In this uh video. You're doing questionable. You slept seven AM to six PM. Oh my goodness, your sleep schedule is wild. But I mean, that's the new years. That's like new years. Everybody's sleep schedule gets haywire. Like in my neighborhood. I live like somewhat out of Baltimore, but we're like close enough to where it's kind of like a cut. People are like shooting guns at the sky like woo. Full on like Wild West style new year. I was so sketched out. Oh, so sketched out. Oh, sleep is hard. Sleep is hard. Sleep is hard. Alright, next we have, oh, this was a fun combo for me. This was a combo that I wanted to do to kind of. Add a little bit more martial arts into the sampler. I didn't do that many kicks early on in the video. So by this time of the session, I was like. Oh damn, I gotta do some kicks. So I wanted to do a very kicky combo. And I started with a giant jumping front kick. Like I think I got a good like four or five feet of height off this. Which is pretty hype. What's a good vert kick to do out of moon kick? Oh, easily pop tornado. Pop tornado is like everybody's best friend. It's the or BS backside nine as I've also heard it called. Just when you land in like neutral or front side, you rotate uh three hundred sixty agree. Yeah, three hundred sixty degrees and you just throw a round kick. That is a really popular vert kick for people to do at a moon kick. Oh my God, my height here. And then I go right down. So this is a transition kind of that I like to do in a lot of my combo structure. I will do a really high skill and then a really low skill. And in that kind of combo through different heights as I go through. So this is like really high jumping front kick and then I'm going to go low profile to do a inward three sixty dive roll. Go back the way I came to do another shuriken cutter. I didn't like that I did a shuriken cutter here. I wish I would have done a slightly different variation. Just because I've done a lot of shuriken cutters already in this session. But sometimes you kind of get stuck on a skill, especially when you're thinking about a lot of other things. That said, that was a really good shuriken cutter. Very solid shuriken, very solid hook kick. So I feel good about that shuriken cutter, but definitely it could have done a different variation, something a little bit. Just a little bit different. You got a question? Do I think before you do a combo or you make it up mid combo? So it's a little bit of both. It depends on, I will have a vague idea of. A combo in my head or sometimes I will write out a full combo, but shit happens. Things go wrong. And when that happens, I often have to like switch up kind of what I'm doing, my mentality, where I'm like. Facing and turning and kind of keeping my mindset at. Cause if I get locked into a combo and things go wrong. Well, then the combo is not going to work out. I want to recover because it's so important for battles. So I've kind of have both in my head. I have this like super formal, I'll write out the combo and then this like. Zany, I'm gonna do whatever I want kind of freestyle with it. And I try and balance these as much as I can. Recently I've been working a little bit more freestyle, but the tour. And kind of going to a lot of gatherings forces me to shift my training to that kind of degree. Oh, you got a knee injury while training parkour. Okay, on the ninth day it healed. Right now you're looking to go back to the gym. Hmm. Yeah, you gotta be careful. The body is strong, but the body, if you poke it in the wrong way, is fragile, is fragile. And that is everybody, like regardless of how like strong you are. If you get poked in the wrong place, it's like ah. Oh, let's go. You got a handstand push up and frog to handstand. That's hype. That's super hype. I think training your handstands and hand balancing is a really like good thing for trickers to do. Alright, now we move into, oh, I was trying to do a McDirty. I was trying to do a McDirty, but the McDirty wasn't feeling right. A McDirty is a fail long twist. This one I had the variation nice and solid, good shuriken, good uh round kick. Started go for the twist, but then I bailed and just fell on my side. I got up and just stuck my tongue out. That's kind of how I felt after landing this combo. Sometimes after landing a combo, I'll just be like, ugh. I felt nasty. I didn't feel good at all. And that was kind of the case with this one. Cheat nine felt good. Oh, here's where things went crazy. So at this point in the session, I was like, alright, I've done a lot of power tricks. I've done a lot of good stuff. Let's go have some fun. Am I scared of falling on my side? So I have gotten really good at falling. I am not super scared of falling at this point because I've gotten really good at it and I know that sounds crazy. But look at this combo that I do right here and you'll see kind of what I mean. So. Ukemi is a sign that I've trained for a long time now. Um, it is kind of like the art of break falls, how to learn to absorb the impact as you fall. And redistribute it through different parts of your body. In this one, I do a cheat nine hook. I do a big elbow touchdown rise and then I fake out to do a gainer backdrop. Now from here, I'm gonna fall like two feet into the ground and just eat it. Eat it with my body, but you'll notice that there's a technique to it. There my joints are stacked on my arms and legs and my back is nice and straight in line with the floor. As my pelvis and shoulders are going to take the majority of the impact. And from there, I'm actually able to bounce off the ground. Yes. I wish I would have gotten a better bounce. I think I was a little bit loose here. If I would have landed a little bit tighter. My bounce would have been higher and easier to combo out of. But after that, I do a grounded hook kick to. I kind of got lost in the sauce after that break fall. That break fall, I gainer'd a lot. I don't know if you guys noticed. But after I landed the touchdown rise, I actually traveled forward or actually it would be this way for you guys or that way for you guys. I traveled forward as I did the break fall. So my momentum got a little bit jacked up. But I kind of needed to travel forward because I was starting to go towards all the hard stuff over to the side over there. So then the grounded hook kick was kind of a way for me to figure out where I am as well as what direction I need to go. I can end that hook kick a little bit under rotated or I can over rotate it. I can kind of shift my direction of momentum, a good ninety or a hundred eighty degrees through doing that grounded hook kick. But unfortunately, I totally didn't know what cork variation or what skill I was gonna end this combo with. So I just fell. I just opened up like at the crowd awakener position and then rotated over to the shuriken and just. Absorbed onto the ground. So I started tricking about ten or eleven years ago. I need to do the math. But I've kind of had a lifetime of movement. Before I started tricking, I had my black belt in taekwondo. And both of my parents were acrobatic and athletic coaches for the majority of their lifetime. So I've just been training my whole life. Training is like breathing to me. It is normal. If I don't train, I'm like. I get like anxious. I get like super anxiety if I don't train. Do you hold your breath during the break fall or is it just tech that keeps you from getting winded? So there's different ways to do it and different techniques. I totally realized that we lost our music a hot minute ago. We're back. Um, sometimes you want to just hold your body nice and tight. Sometimes you want to exhale as you land. To kind of keep your lungs moving. You just never want to inhale. If you inhale as you land on the ground, your lungs will kind of. When you land on the ground, your lungs are like a balloon and they get kind of squished. So you don't want to. Let air in to let them get like s- squished and compressed. Rather you want to either let air out as they get squished and just like a little bit like a. Or you want to hold nice and tight. I will often hold nice and tight, but it kind of depends. It depends on how big the break fall is. At one point you are going to need to exhale because you're just getting too much energy. But as you do that exhale, your lungs like partially collapse into themselves and you get a little bit winded. And honestly, I'm not gonna lie. Sometimes you just get winded. Sometimes you just, you eat that floor. And it tastes like chocolate, you know? It's just how it be sometimes. It's just how it be. So from there, I moved on to doing a cart. Oh, from there I got greedy. From there I got so greedy. I was like, you know what I want to do now? I want a triple full. So I started repping out standing cart triple full. With being in my head that if I couldn't triple cork, I want to at least triple full for this sampler. But I'm really tired at this point. So I'm like, I, and I've been eating a lot of, a lot of floor at this point. So I'm like, if I can triple full, I'm really good. And sometimes I want to feel really good. So I was like, I want to do this triple full. But I messed up the first one. I definitely didn't commit hard. And that is one of the things that was why I was so jovial and kind of relaxed. If I don't commit to a skill hard and I fall, I'm very much okay with it. But if I commit to a skill and then I mess up, then I'll get kind of ticked off. Then I'll get kind of upset rather. You realize that at the gym, despite no mattresses, there is a place with enough space to train some tricks like cartwheel. Yes. Now the only thing I have to overcome there is the fact that it's probably awkward to do tricking right in front of. Yeah, tricky moves at a weightlifting gym, especially basics like kicks. I feel that. It is like hard to train tricking in public sometimes. Just because tricking is such a kind of avant garde sport. We're all just a bunch of hippies. You know? And sometimes people are not that hippie and they're trying to go unga and like uh uh, but. The kicks are not like super aggressive. A punching bag is good. A punching bag is good. I like hitting a punching bag. I find it's really good for trickers to actually practice. Striking a target every now and then to keep their form nice and good and it keeps it a little bit more martial. So Lucky, to explain what a sampler is. A sampler is a video that a trigger makes to show their skills. It is a sample of their skill set. Honestly, samplers kind of came out of the stunt industry and tricking kind of adopted them. As well as a lot of parkour people and they got really popular like in the early like two thousands in the twenty teens. Recently they've been dropping off, but there's this big group in the community who's trying to get more samplers out. Like recently the biggest sampler that came out is Rowdy by Ethan Turner. If you haven't seen that, you totally should because it's like. It's nice. It's nice. Yo, yes, Andy Lee is always going ham at the gym. He's always going ham. He's hitting the bag, he's slapping the wall, he's hitting the floor, he's going yeah. I totally lost a headphone there, but like he's so going in and he doesn't care. Use Andy Lee as your spirit animal when you're at the gym. Cause like at the end of the day, if you want to progress, you're gonna need to put yourself out there. Just because there's no other way. I need to find this headphone. We got there. We got there. Oh yo, straight up Brian two. Brian two, Dema's in there as well. They're all throwing it. No, tricking is super cool. Tricking is super cool. I think tricking will make you feel more like a superhero than any other sport, any other sport. Hands down. I'll get aggressive about that. Alright, next we do. Now you see that one, you see how it looked a little bit more frustrated when I fell? That's because I committed more. And when I put more energy into it and I still don't get it, ooh, ooh, that's when you get pissed. That's when you get pissed. That one's all jokes. All jokes on the first one. The second one, I'm pissed. I'm pissed. And especially if I put a hand down like that, like right there, that is recovery aerial material. You don't put a hand down there, but I put a hand down and that's tragic. I should not have done that. Oh, I should have cut that off. But through that frustration and rage, I think I was able to finally get it. Oh, and then I was so happy. Yo, what am I doing? You see, at this point I've gotten so like numb to break falls and so numb. To like getting wounded and falling that as a celebration, I'm just jumping. Dropping myself onto the back. I don't know what my problem is. I don't know why I'm so okay with doing this all the time. Who is cleaner, Matt Emmig or Aiden Kennedy? Aiden Kennedy. Matt had his time. Okay, I gotta ask, who do you think is the first person to do a standing double back? Cause in your opinion, Aaron Cook did it off a spring floor, but Nick Fry did it on grass. So in your opinion, you think Nick Fry?
I don't know.
I don't know. I uh, so this is just a me thing personally. I, when it comes to worlds first or the first person to do a skill, I never believe it. I never wanna accredit anybody to doing the first thing ever because we don't know. Every, all of those kids who are training in India on this dirt who don't have a camera. We don't get to see their progress. We don't get to see their progression. All of those people in the past who were doing big skills. And they just didn't have a camera or didn't have a phone. It's just not, you just don't get it. So I don't think that, I don't wanna accredit the uh. Worlds first of any of those things to anybody cuz we just don't know. That said, Aaron Cook killed it. Nick Fry killed it. This stuff is hype. This is why we trick, to set boundaries and to break limits. Or not to set boundaries, to break the boundaries and to overcome the limits. And to just keep getting better and better. I'm into the longevity progression. I'm not a historian. If someone out there wants to be the tricking historian to go through and try and document. Which person in which communities landed things at which time, we need that guy. But it's just, it's, we don't know. We don't know. And it's like in gymnastics, the bile's had been done before, but never in a national competition. So it's like she got to name the skill, but she wasn't the first in the world to do the skill. Oh, I missed a message. What are the downsides of using a punching bag when training any kick? I don't think there are downsides to using a punching bag. I think using a punching bag is all upsides. I think it's, there are downsides if you misuse the tool. A punching bag is just like a weight. It is a tool that you have to use. If you are punching it with bad form or like flapping your arm on the punching bag or kicking with uh. Your toes flexed, you're going to get injured and it's going to hurt your body with time. But if you're kicking with good form and really trying to focus on it, it will be better. It will help improve your technique. Should you go to parkour gyms? Yeah. We need a Jimmy the Giant but for tricking? Ah, I know, I know. We just need more creators. We need more creators covering tricking and we need more creators within the tricking community. Yeah. Most definitely. Yeah, no, I've gotten so numb to breakfalls. I decided not to include the pop off in the sampler just cuz it didn't really fit. I know tricking is young. Trickings is young. I would never hesitate to say that tricking is one of the youngest sports we got right now. Trickings is like a baby, especially when you compare it to gymnastics, when you compare it to skateboarding. Trickings is a baby. Baby. Oh, let's go. Capital or uh parkour park in the capital city of Romania? That's sick. That's sick. When do I think someone would do standing triple backflip? It's like, so here's the thing. You noted it in uh, in the comment you said earlier when asking if Aaron Cook or Nick Fry did it first. The. Environment that a person does a skill matters so much. People have done standing triple backflip. But they just haven't done it on level ground. I've seen standing triple backflip on a trampoline, but I've never seen it on a spring floor. I've never seen it on grass. I've seen it from height, but I've never seen it uh going up something. Holy shit. There's like a ton of different options. No, I live very far from Romania. I don't think I'll be going there anytime soon. Maybe not the first five forty, but the first uh triple cork and triple B twist, definitely. Yeah. Yeah, at, at, there's a point where people can like start to get the history. Like there's no denying that Scott Skellon was the first person to triple cork. But one legged off axis triple. I don't know if that had never been done before. We just don't have the technology. We don't got that time travel. I think every spring floor should be outdoor. Oh, so here was kinda me doing that combo that I was thought about earlier. That phalon combo where I then did the redirect uh gainer. This was kinda what my idea for that combo was earlier. I just wanted to revisit it and get the combo done. Oh, as well as incorporating a better combo with that breakfall from the elbow touchdown rise. Elbow touchdown rise breakfall is something I got from Will Conys a long time ago. And it's been part of my skillset ever since then. It's just a really fun thing for me to do. That one, I had a much better bounce and twist coming off the floor. I was far tighter there. And I ended with just a box cutter. I did a little bit too many hyper hooks. I should have done more doubles and variations. But it's hard, you know, it's a big session and I'm doing so many skills that it's hard to keep track of every single flip I'm doing. Now here, if I remember right, double full hyper hook, sailor moon twist. So this is like a budget dub dub cuz it's a dub dub, but it's not a dub dub. It's not a swing at all and you have this like big kind of pause position in the middle. So in no way is this like a traditional or like a classic dub dub. You can't really call it a dub dub. But it's a cool linkage of two skills that both involve big twisty. I wish that hook kick would have been a little bit cleaner though. My hook kick needs to get a little bit cleaner out of the double full hyper hook when I'm focusing on doing another skill after. I need to kinda drill it a little bit more. I think I just need to do like five hundred hook kicks. I think I need to do a bunch of hook kicks. I know, I know. There's so much to uh. Yes, yes. Haruki. Yo, what? Haruki, where is my head at? Oh, thank you dude. Thank you. Thank you. Happy year of the dub dub Dante. Yo, everybody dub dubs by the end of the year. It's twenty twenty two. It's year of the dub dub. So here I wanted to get into a little bit more variation presence. So, oh, I remember now. That one, I was trying to do a crowd awakener hyper hook. But my body automatically did a shuriken cutter. I did way too many shuriken cutters this session. And I haven't done that many crowd awakener hypers, so my body got a little confused, so I had to move off and do something else. Here we got, yes, this I was really happy with. Rodeo cork gyro is one of my favorite like uh just one hitter power skills. And I think it's just a really cool looking skill. So when I was able to do it right here and get such a prominent grab. Like I was able to really feel that grab and then rip out that twist, which feels really good. A dub dub is a double and then a double. So imagine like a double full and then a double cork, a double cork and then a double cork, a double B twist and then a double cork. All of these would be considered dub dubs. In Ice Lord thirteen, I did two uh kinda classical dub dubs, double full hyper double B twist. And um, double full swing double cork. Volatrics? I am not sure. I am not sure. I know they're based in Asia. I'm just not sure what specific part. Um, yeah. Oh, there we go. Now we are getting into more big variations. This is a uh. Cork shuriken cutter swipe knife or cork shuriken swipe knife. You'll see three total kicks. First, a big shuriken, then a round kick, then a hook kick. I really like this variation and I was able to do it pretty well. I think the second one was a little bit worse than the first, so the first one was the one that I actually put into the sampler. That time, I don't know exactly what I was going for. But it ended up being just a bad cart full shuriken cutter. Sometimes that's just how it be. Sometimes it's not good. Sometimes it's not clean. Oh, nice flick flack hook. Redirect to a psycho crusher hyper hook, full psycho crusher hyper hook. Ah, yeah, it's a lot to say. The thing is, I was having issues with the targeting of this combo. I wanted to do my psycho crusher directly at the camera. So that way people could see my arms and I didn't like how I was going away from the camera as I was doing the key variation of the combo. So instead I switched to doing a e-kick into the cartwheel, so that way I could do it going straight at the camera. And then I wanted to end with a reverse sal cuz it felt like the combo was just kinda too short. And this is one of my favorite clips. Look at my foot nearly going straight into my GoPro, straight into my camera. I almost wrecked all of my equipment right there. But somehow I pulled it back and recovered. That is one of my favorite clips that I got from this entire like session. Because I was so scared that I was gonna like wreck my stuff. I didn't wanna wreck my stuff. Yeah, there's a lot of dub dubs. Ah, I felt so good about that. That was a good looking uh reverse sal too. This time I did the same combo and I did it cleaner. But uh, the reverse sal ended up off camera. And that is like a big tragedy. Big tragedy. Equipment Ukemi, yes. I did a lot of, oh, this was one of my favorite combos during this whole session. We gotta analyze this. So this is a pop one eighty hyper and then I dip right down into. I asked what people thought this was on Instagram and I got like four different answers. One from Capoeira, which is in a Brazilian that I'm not gonna try and pronounce. One that said inside nineteen ninety, one that said um. I'm looking it up. I'm looking it up. Cuz like here's the thing about terminology. I want to get things right. I wanna be like a people of, a person of the community and like, you know. Help educate people on what the hell this stuff is named, but in reality, there's no consensus. I'm like a politician with like two parties that just hate each other by, side by side. Yeah, so I've heard it called reverse nineteen ninety, dead man's. Dead man nineteen ninety, inside out nineteen ninety. Okay, this is the uh Brazilian. Pio de Mayo. There's just too many names. There's too many names. I like dead man. I like the name dead man cuz it kinda looks like what it is. And if I accentuate like the uh arch in my body, I'll really look like a dead man. So that's kinda what I'm gonna. Consider it moving forward. That said, like terminology is always a tool. You should just call things what makes sense to you. Felt really good about that landing. Cuz I needed to land with a lot of control. That's why I used Papa one eighty hy-